Okay, it's five thirty. Welcome everyone and we welcome our virtual friends, but I'm going to read our policy. In accordance with CMS Board Policy B twenty one fifty, the Board acknowledges its responsibility to provide access to live video and audio webcasts of local school board meetings. At the same time, the Board must ensure that as proceedings are conducted in an orderly and efficient manner. So in order to maintain a virtual environment that closely mirrors in-person meetings and to uphold the integrity and decorum of each session, the CMS Board requires that virtual attendees display both their first and last name and keep their cameras on through the entire meeting. These guidelines are also intended to discourage individuals from attending under a false identity. Attendees who do not comply with these requirements will be removed from the virtual platform, but recordings of each meeting will be made available on the district's website within one week of this meeting. Thank you all. All right, so can we have a roll call, please? Member Martin?
Here.
Member Hamilton?
Here.
Secretary Cordova?
Here.
Vice President Epps?
Here.
President Osborne?
Here, thank you.
Now would everybody please stand and join Mr. Martin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty of the public which stands on a nation of your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the desire symbol of perfect friendships among the united cultures.
You may be seated, thank you. Okay. The next item is a consideration item to consider approval of the minutes from the July twenty third, twenty four, twenty twenty four meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the July twenty third meeting.
Second by Mr. Hamilton and the second by Mrs. Epps, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Very much. The next item is the consideration of approval of the agenda, but I think, Ms. Russ, do you have?
Yes, Madam President, I would like to recommend that item eleven A, which is Consider Committee Recommendations to Receive Seal Bids for the Removal of the Rain Tree Center Property, be removed from tonight's agenda and addressed on another date to make sure that we've explored all of the valuation methods and to allow administration time to gather some additional information.
Okay, that is agreeable. I would entertain a motion to remove item eleven A for consideration at a later date.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda by removing item eleven A.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
And I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cordova. Let's have a roll call vote on that, please. Member Martin?
Yes.
Member Hamilton?
Yes.
Secretary Cordova?
Yes.
Vice President Epps?
Yes.
President Osborne?
Yes.
Okay, so now we will entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Thank you very much. We have a motion by Mr. Cordova and seconded by Mr. Martin. Roll call for this one too, please. Member Martin?
Yes.
Member Hamilton?
Yes.
Secretary Cordova?
Yes.
Vice President Epps?
Yes.
President Mark, or excuse me, President Osborne? Thank you. Apologies. Yes. All right, moving to the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions, comments?
I have none, madam.
I have no question. Move that we approve the consent agendas.
Mr. Martin made a motion.
I second.
Is that seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, ma'am. My first item tonight will be an update from Sarah Williams regarding Cannon.
Good evening, President, Board Members, Superintendent. Just a couple of updates. I just want to say thank you for everybody's attendance at the back-to-school event. We had so much going on that day. We had about seven hundred and fifty families, well, not families, people come through. So that was a really good win for us. We're excited about that. Our Anchor for Life, we just went ahead and did our Gaddis training, so now we have Marshall and Gaddis training for Anchor for Life. So we're excited to see what schools are going to be next. And then the only other thing I really have as far as updates is our Tudo's event for September twenty eighth. We have some teachers that have signed up, but we have sixty slots, so we're really excited to see how many Clovis people we can get. So we're definitely taking sign-ups for that. And then I just want to let everybody know that I'm absolutely available for any kind of educational PDs that you guys need me to come in and do any kind of trainings for educators, for staff, whatever it is. We could do things about military culture. We could do things about supporting military students, any of that. Just please reach out to me and let me know, and I'm more than happy to come do this for you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, so school's back in session and we have our presenters from Clovis High School, and if you two would make sure to introduce yourself. I think we're going to have rotating students this year.
Yeah, good. Well, that's awesome. Welcome. Glad you're here.
Hello, Board, President and Superintendent. My name is Jayla Harris Hinch. I am the Student Council to student body public public representative, and I have myself, Robert Lee and Avery Lynn, had the opportunity to participate in CHS's ninety-day plan. This is where the CHS leadership meets up and discusses the prior ninety days of instruction and sets goals for the upcoming school year. So in this, we have student voice. We've tried our best to relay what we had learned from the last school year and what we felt would help students progress. One of the things that we talked about during this was getting student feedback to teachers. And through this, we CHS leadership rolled out a common formative assessment. And so this questionnaire is to further gauge student involvement levels as well as a way to get feedback regarding how instruction's going, so.
Good evening, Board. Sorry, it's very nice to see y'all again. My name's McKenna Music. I am the Student Body President here at Clovis High School. This evening, I'm here to discuss our vision for the year. Overall, at Clovis High School, we're really looking this year as a student council to really express the value of a student and express the student's value. Over here at the high school, we have so many students that are just very gifted and very like passionate about what they do, whether it's sports, clubs, or any like any parts of the high school, even academics. We really want to just reach out with the students and see what would make them feel more excited about school or feel appreciated for what they do and what they have been a part of here in the community or school, and we're just looking to have y'all as on our back and have y'all support and all that. We want to really work with our students this year and coming up with many activities and just demonstrating that they at the high school are valued. As a student, it's what makes the school good. And other than that, we are rolling into our homecoming week this next week. We are very excited for that, very pept and spirited. We're going to kick off the week with our powder puff and then heading to the bonfire the next day and then finish it off with the game. We have our pep rally planned for Thursday, so we're very excited to get the school spirited and excited, so we wish our football boys some good luck for that. Y'all have a great evening.
Just be assured that we value you.
Yes, very much.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, my next item, the final item, we have a request for our band to travel their annual trip to the, to the St. George Regional. We have Director Pettis here. If we have additional questions, I don't know if you want to come up to the front, but if you take a look at their itinerary, it's very, very tight, traveling through the night and appreciate the adjustment to the schedule, just just be aware that costs for traveling are really increasing, and so it's increasing the fundraising that they're having to do, but they're working hard, and if you have any questions about the trip and welcome, I think this is your first board meeting, so really excited to have you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me.
Board members, any questions or comments?
I got a comment.
Okay.
Bring home the goal.
We will do our best. We'll do our best.
I just would like to say welcome.
Of course.
You know, my daughters had you when you were here, and they loved you, you know, and so we wish you the best, and I know you're going to be well here. So just know that we're here for you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for allowing me to step into this position. I think the kids are excited. There's a lot of excitement in the air. I'm really excited for you guys to get a preview of the show. We're performing our first movement at this first home football game, so come check it out. I think it'll be a good time. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
There are no other comments. This is a consideration item.
I move that we request permission for the travel for the high school band.
Could we approve it? Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mrs. Epps made a motion and Mr. Hamilton seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Your travel's granted.
Thank you so much.
That was my final one.
Instructional matters, Mrs. Nygraville.
Good evening, President Osborne, Members of the Board, Superintendent Russ. I have quite a few things on my section of the agenda tonight, so like to start with just an update of our discipline matrices. We have made just a few minor changes this year. As you look through those documents, with the exception of the highlighted sections at the top and the bottom of each document, the highlighted portions in in each of those individual rows and columns, those represent changes that were made from the previous version of these matrices. For the most part, you're going to see changes in some of the descriptions of the offenses. We wanted to be sure that we had enough clarity in the language to be able to guide our administrators in utilizing these documents. Really wanted to provide consistency, better understanding, also for our families who refer to these. These are public documents that are posted, and we do have families that refer to these documents as well. And we wanted to add some clarity around potential Title IX violations, just as one additional reminder to our administrators if they have a situation that may result in a Title IX violation, that they just are given a little reminder on paper as well, that they need to follow certain processes. And then we made just a few changes to some of the consequences for some offenses. As far as the source of these changes came from a variety of places, throughout the year, I have lots of conversations with administrators as they are seeking some guidance in handling certain discipline incidents. And I find at times that we could benefit from some clarifying language in these documents, so I make notes of those throughout. We also consult our administrators who are utilizing these documents to get feedback from them. After we draft up revisions, we get feedback again from administrators. I convene a parent group to get feedback from parents about not only the content of these documents, but also what is really top of mind for them regarding discipline for the sites where their children is in school. So those are all of the processes that I follow to prepare those revisions. I will tell you that while this, the documents in front of you represent probably ninety-five percent of the changes that will be made, I do want to continue to go back to some of the notes that I made with the parent group that I worked with. Primarily, those recommendations had to do with maybe how things were communicated or how resources were available. There were some minor recommendations they had to some language that have been included in these versions, but there are potential additional minor changes that may come in the future, but this represents the majority of all of the feedback received from every group. Can I answer any questions?
Uh, Ms. Nygraville, is this the part where the district coaching thought partners were brought in?
So district coaching thought partners are always working with the principals and often disciplined conversations become a part of those coaching conversations. And because they're a part of my team that I meet with regularly, they did have some input as well. Probably just in all of the steps of the process, not necessarily a single gathering with them. They continually have voice in this process.
As someone who's conducted hearings, I was glad to see that there's not a hard and fast, because there needs to be some reasonableness.
Yes.
I appreciate that you guys are pushing discipline with reasonableness.
And we found great success. One of the big changes we made last year was the incorporation of restorative practices and made a lot of schools really latch on to that and come out with some really effective processes with kids. And so there's not been a change to that. You'll see that same language that you were introduced to last year, but we really saw great benefit from that. So my next item is, oh, it's listed as a consideration item. I'm so sorry.
There are no other questions, then, if there's a motion to consider updates to the discipline.
I move that we consider updates to the CMS discipline matrices.
I second.
Motion by Mrs. Epps and a second by Mr. Martin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. So next I have just a brief update on our enrollment numbers. Currently, our pre-K through twelfth grade enrollment is seven thousand four hundred eighteen students. That is about one hundred forty fewer than this time last year, and so we are continuing to see that small downward trend that we talked about last year as a result of all of the information that came out of our facilities master plan process. It's about not quite a two percent decline from last year. We transitioned our elementary population to nine elementary schools this year, and that has gone really well, with the exception of maybe underestimating the number of students who would be at Sandia, every other school. The kids pretty much showed up where we thought that they were going to show up. We did have to have a couple of minor moves, but for the most part, we did a good job of predicting where those kids were going to show up. Our pre-K site is already serving about thirty more four-year-olds than they were at this time last year. We are saving, we have to save a little bit of space. We save about one spot in each of the fourteen classrooms for kids that are coming in with special needs on an IEP that we need to be sure we have placement for. We recently had some confirmation from the state about the fact that they have put a little bit of a halt on further expanding four-Y programs so that they can focus on the expansion of three-Y programs in the state. The state indicates that they think that they've reached eighty-four percent saturation across the state, meaning that eighty-four percent of four-year-old families have found service in some some program in their communities. May not be public school, it may be certain daycares or private preschools, but they are then capping our grant at two hundred and eighty students so that they can focus statewide on expanding three-Y offerings. So originally, we were serving, last year at this time, we were serving probably two hundred and thirty-eight maybe, and right now we're at about two hundred and sixty-eight, and then we have room for for several more that come in with special needs. Any questions on enrollment before I move on?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So the next item that I have is our Title I non-competitive grant application. This is funding that is provided by the state to schools who receive either a CSI or an MRI designation. And so if you recall, last spring, we updated the Board on the categories that the state designate schools in based upon a formula. It includes academic proficiency, it includes English learners, it includes attendance, a variety of components feed into that formula. We only have one school that fits into this category. Gaddis Middle School is a CSI school, which stands for Comprehensive Support and Improvement. And they have been categorized for their student subgroups of special education students and English learners. And so this money is designated for those schools, but the schools and districts have to submit an application about how that money will be used, and the money will be available for three years, even if schools exit that status. And so the state has put in place a plan that is going to allow whatever improvements were provided for with that funding to continue, even if it meets the desired outcome of that's that school being removed from designation status. So what you see here is the application that was submitted for Gaddis that was the result of work from that ninety-day planning team, the high school students mentioned the ninety-day planning. Every school works through that process, and so Gaddis's team determined how they would focus the work of the school for this next ninety days, and then they aligned this proposed funding to the work that they wanted to do to improve performance for all students, but specifically for our students on an IEP and our English learners. And so at the very end of the application, you'll also see the budget and the way that they are proposing to spend those funds. This application was due on the sixteenth, and so we haven't received word back yet, but we just wanted to make you aware of the commitment that we've made as a district and the plan for those funds by Gaddis. Stand for any questions on that before I hand over the podium.
It's like a very comprehensive plan.
It is. Thank you. So with that, I'm going to turn the podium over to Mr. Fredericks. He's going to talk a little bit about CHS accreditation. After Mr. Fredericks, when Ms. Westbrook comes up to join him, and then when she addresses her items, she's also going to address the items that were listed under Crystal Gutierrez in her absence tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, President Osborne, Members of the Board, Superintendent Russ. Thank you for having me. The way that's written is kind of scary. Why would we withdraw from something like cognitive accreditation? The reason is because there's Mexico Admin Code that changed last year and became permanent in the state that we'll do an annual accreditation with the state of New Mexico. And the annual accreditation is actually a little bit further than what Cogni have, because it has more of a financial tune, it does our nine-day plan, it does all of our state reporting for caseloads and course loads included into our accreditation. So really, the PED put together and made see a culmination of all the requirements they have over schools and put it into one document and said, now we're going to give you accreditation from the state of New Mexico, which I think was probably overdue. There's a lot of the reports that we currently do as a district at the district level and also at the building level, we're reporting our student data, demographic data, our test performance scores, but beyond that, we're also reporting on the backside, our financial audits and all the other processes that we do as a district will contribute to our accreditation as a school, which is more thorough and more frequent. So the cognitive accreditation is something that would happen every six years and hasn't happened in a while due to COVID, kind of in the middle of our accreditation period, so it was a little bit longer than that. Some of the assurances I have from representatives from the PED is that our accreditation and CHS will not lapse in this duration. So our first year for accreditation with the PED will be this academic school year, so we'll know where we stand at the end of the year. The work that we currently do as a school is robust and I'm really excited to see, and we have new rubrics for our admin, and one of the lines in here that's really specific, if we don't do good, I don't have a job. So that is something that's, it's written in here. So it's one of those things that there's a lot of accountability attached to this, but it's really nothing that we haven't been doing as a district. It's not extra work for any particular office. It's things that we've been doing that count towards building an accreditation.
Questions or comments?
Kind of just consolidated it all into one, right?
Correct, and it does do employee services where we do staff reporting as far as, you know, levels of licensure. It's finance on that side. What access kids have to and how they're accessing internet, like everything that we have to access, their educational processes in here included, so that those, the caseloads for IEPs, all of that is our items that are considered. It will stock it all in one place. They're considered other places in New Mexico, but now it's consolidated.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Ms. Westbrook, will you come join me, please? Because this is, this is the good stuff. I don't want to take any thunder here, because this is, this is, this is very exciting for us to work through together. And it's been quite the journey with my friend here to get this done. We should I give the backstory, or would you like to give the backstory?
You can do it.
Oh, my goodness. So a couple of springs ago, we were at the Heather Fair at the Civic Center, and we ran into Salvation Army. They had a food trailer outside, so we went to go take a look, and holy smoke, it just started percolating. And between us thinking together at the same time in the same space, it's dangerous. Doesn't happen often, but what it does is dangerous. So we started rolling around with this idea, and the idea was that we probably ought to have a food trailer at our schools, and it, there's a lot of purposes and a lot of reasons behind it that we'll get to. So we thought about working with the outside entity to get that done, and and Lord Hill just flat out asked us one day, why don't you all just buy your own food trailer? And that, like, I'd never even wow, okay, appreciate that. So we really started getting some momentum and found out that they're not extraordinarily out of reach. So those are some of the things that that kind of brings us up to us standing here front and today. So there's a lot of thought and processes that have gone on behind the scenes here, and so for us, it's a fun, innovative way to promote our national school lunch program. So it is going to bring life to our service line. It's not the city line, it'll be a destination line. For me, as a building principal, it's going to be a classroom and a functional space to learn for our students, so it's going to be a lab space for us. When we have events that we want to fundraise at or special events in the city, it's going to be an opportunity for us to do that and a way to provide fresh food for our traveling students. So those are the main points that we'll get to today.
So like Mr. Fredericks said, we're really proud to finally present this idea. We presented it to Cabinet, and then we were asked to present it to you as well to keep you informed, and so this has been two years in the making, and so if we talk a lot and if we talk fast, it's because we've had a lot of ideas for a long time. But this has truly been a collaboration between the high school and student nutrition. And so when he talks about incentivizing the national school lunch program, as all of you know, we're a self-sustaining program, and so we we rely on that student participation, but like I've said many times, we don't care how many kids we serve. We do care, I should say, how many kids we serve, however, we care more about how many kids eat our food. So let's say that. And so this is a fun, innovative way to have a food trailer on campus cooking hot food to incentivize kids to come to this new idea and participate in that free food, because all kids get that free breakfast and lunch. So we will be using it during meal service, and we'll be working hand in hand with the CTE classroom, so you can.
Absolutely. So our ProStar program would be facilitating lessons in the food trailer, helping with some of the prep and some of the work that's going to go on there. So it's real-life experience of running a business, but there will be a business component, because the food that we're going to be serving is going to be coming from our food program, which is free for our kids, so what we order, we get to serve. And beyond that, there's going to be a business component that I probably addressed a little long, but for them, they're going to be working together to make sure that what they're serving is safe serve. You know, they're going to use all their strategies that they have in class, and they're going to get out there and use their high skills, and they're going to use everything they learned in the classroom and apply it immediately to to serve their peers, which is going to be pretty exciting.
And so we'll follow all of the regulations from the National School Lunch Program, anything from the nutrition analysis and all of the regulations that we have to follow, but again, working in conjunction with students so that they get that real-life experience. It, like you said, it will act as a live classroom or lab, and then there's also fundraising possibilities for all student groups, and that I'm also excited about. So incentivizing our program, it's an alternative dining option outside of the cafeteria. We will still keep the cafeteria. That's where the main line will be. This will only serve what we call the combo line. And in case of some activity or emergency, if we needed to use that trailer, we would just move that combo line back into the cafeteria. So we have a plan for that as well, so the students still have options. It's a novel concept to serve students additional options, including whatever our ProStar kids come up with as far as recipes, once it's gone through all of the nutrition analysis, and it will enhance meal accessibility for Clovis High. There's a lot of kids there, and a lot of them don't actually like to come in the cafeteria sometimes, and so all those kids that are outside just hanging out, we're hoping that they want to come to the food truck. All items will be free, like we said, because we are still community eligibility provision, so all food that we serve at Clovis High during breakfast and lunch is free. So all food that we serve at Clovis High during breakfast and lunch is free to all kids. And I love that. I love that there's no stigma. Any kid who wants a meal can go up and get a meal. Oh, is it me against you? Okay, so better way to search students during emergencies. So there's a a couple of quantitative data that I've been keeping, but there was time when there was an emergency during lunch. And so the kitchen was not accessible and we literally had to go to another cafeteria, make meals, transport them and get them served. And I'm going to tell you that that dedicated team of sixty five people did that by one o'clock. And they're amazing. And so I appreciate their hard work and their urgency and that they can get things done. But how easy would it be if we could just hook up a trailer at an emergency and take it to a school and those kids get the combo line instead? And the last ten times, this is my quantitative data, the electricity is not out and our city has been at lunchtime. I just want everybody to know that electricity goes out close, it's at lunchtime. And we've had three gas related emergencies in the last three years. And like I said, we could use that trailer for emergencies.
So in in addition to all the wonderful things that we can serve while we're in town, our students will be traveling, our student athletes will be traveling, our band will be traveling for multi day events in which we have a hard time coming up with enough food warm all at the same time potentially. Or we we come to restaurants and how do you sit at a bus of band members, our six buses are band members. You send them to different places and you try to coordinate that. That's an extra layer that we would like to help address with this traveling with some of our teams in our sports to make sure that they have the option to, you know, the cost, the real cost of a hamburger with all the the fixings and fries, it's two fifty to us as a district. So you take that on the road and you can multiply that if that supplement at least one meal on the road, that would there be a savings there, it's pretty considerable when you're talking about serving two hundred to three hundred kilos. So this could be something that we take with us on the road. I'm envisioning track meats are my biggest one because I know as a thrower, I'll be, you know, all the time. But there are other people that competed and they weren't ready to eat. But you know, so we had a stagger and and usually get a cold meal or a meal that's been sitting around for a while. If you're if you're not a thrower. This allows us to serve fresh hot whenever they're ready, they come in. So at all six in the morning, they go do their thing, they're done at eleven thirty, hopefully maybe two o'clock. When they're done and they're ready to eat, they there's going to be a meal for them. So those are some of the things that that flexibility allows us to to take on the road with us. The CTE classroom alive, this is where it kind of gets exciting because there's a ton of potential here. And I haven't broke the news to a lot of our CTE instructors yet because this is becoming more and more real and I don't want to devastate them with what can't happen. But I think we're in a really positive position. So we'll have our our culinary arts and our post art teachers that are coming up with menus and the students are saying, hey, I want to cook these things. And then we have to break it down by diet and then we have to break it down by serving size. Then we need to go purchase it. Well, there's all there's an opportunity there to have an accounting class collaborate. And then they might want to go ahead and say, hey, I want to do this at this particular events. And then we can scoop in our our deck and our marketing group that can come in and help market the events as well. So there's there's a combo here that can really help benefit not just one CT program, but really be applicable, applied business sense to a real business that's actually working in the community that we're we're building ourselves. So there's the potential here is pretty great for our CT as far as having authentic experience instead of just doing, hey, let's go sell widgets, you know, they're actually having a product and they're success each other. It depends on how good they are at at their work. And having that authentic learning experience is kind of exciting for me. Hopefully it's exciting for our CT teachers as well. So that's part of the practical part of this where we bring all those those skills together. Fundraising still being fitness. Okay, so fundraising opportunities for us, there's going to be a lot of potential here. The way we envision it working is is that it works through our our food service department where they come in and then have our organizations do the paperwork that say, hey, I'm trying to understand. Here's the event we're going to, here's the paperwork required. They get permission to use this thing, they put the deposit in and they go take it. And then they can use it to fundraise whatever particular event they want to fundraise. So for instance, if there's an event that doesn't have a concession stand, they can be the concession stand. It's mobile, rolls up, they can they can fundraise all they want. If they want to go to the fair and fundraise, there's, you know, obviously we need to get space for them to do that. But those are all things that we're considering as far as fundraising and opportunities. Also branding, each of our organizations would have a brand on the side, a magnet that they could take on and off as they use it to make sure that when they're using it, we know who's using it and and they can be proud of who they are and where they're going. Doesn't have to just be food, they can sell their own merchandise out of there. They get, you know, there's multiple ways to use this trailer just as kind of the magnet side saying, hey, we got something to sell here, come on by.
So barriers that we've already overcome. Like I said, we've been thinking about this and dreaming for two years. Procurement process and procedures have already been satisfied. Money for the food trailer has been secured, storage has been arranged, insurance has been investigated. The Fire Marshal Environmental Department have already provided guidelines. A vendor has been secured, who is ready to build us a custom food trailer that meets all the necessarily necessary guidelines by the Fire Marshal and the Environmental Department. A plan has been established for collaboration between the Student Nutrition Department and Clovis High School. And I need to mention, we didn't have an image of a food trailer. So just know it's not a food truck, it is a food trailer. But I just want to point that out. And so we often talk about how we are in the kid business and this is one way that we can serve kids better.
I'm really, that sounds fun.
No stone left unturned, you checked it all.
I'd I'd just like to say that
Where do I sign?
When 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 you, you know, you know, my favorite subject was lunch. You know, you can spell everything, wanted. And when you don't have lunch, it's kind of, it's it's serious. You know, somebody like Bob, no, he likes to eat. But but again, you know, the the service that the kids are going to be providing, I mean, I think it's going to be a great way for them to learn how to prepare themselves to provide a service that may that, you know, they may use later on, you know, after they graduate. So
So, Mr. Cordova, we have an actual real life story. We did a, we we went on a field trip because we were trying to find where's a food trailer store. So we went out and we started going to the food trucks in town and we found Oscar Fernandes. And he, go ahead, because he
He is a graduate of CHS. He worked in our ProStar kitchen, learned his skills, went on and now owns and operates his own food trailer as his business and primary source of income. And he is probably one of the kindest person, just a calm person and and gave us the direct line to an owner of the company, not just, you know, the entry level person. He's like, no, call call him, call Junior. It's like, okay. Call Junior. It's like, hey, this is and and
We didn't know it was Junior's personal
I didn't know it was his personal phone and he ran the whole place, but it was really nice to get in contact with Junior. And that, just that small town connection that he wants to pour back into our ProStar program and come in and guest lecture for our kiddos who really wants to be connected to this project as well. So having him in our community right here is, and that's not a, that's not a plug, but he's
That was an inspiration though for us.
A very, it touched my heart to see how successful, how happy he was in what he loves.
There you go.
Well, I think the students and now you guys have checked the tell me something good box.
Well, I still have something good to say. So I'm just pleased to share with all of you finally that we have observed a substantial decline in chronic absenteeism within our district. Analysis of trend data over the past three years indicates a notable reduction of six percentage points compared to the previous school year. As you review the trend data over the past three years shared below, you can see that we have decreased by those six percentage points compared to that previous year. This data is now sourced, I am glad to say, from NOVA, the reporting system for a chronic absenteeism report. And last year, we didn't have a chronic absenteeism report. And that's why I'm noting that because now we do have one. We have kept that data internally as a district. And I am happy to report that our data was accurate and it compared to NOVA. So that was really good news. Increased frequency of attendance data reviews at each campus, facilitating time timely interventions and provision of wraparound services for students across the district have been a big contributing factor. And there are many, many people to celebrate that, all the way from administrative assistant or attendance assistance to family services, to every wraparound service that's provided in the school building. So there are many people to celebrate and we are excited. But one of the main things that I want to point out, something that we changed last year that was really a significant change was the professional development of staff members through the Ron Clark Academy, equipping them with strategies to engage students and foster academic excellence. And so in the next slide, these are many people who got to go bring back those strategies. You see how excited they are there? And that's how kids are feeling when they come to schools. And so I just wanted to point out that I think that was one of the major contributing factors. That's one of the things that we changed last year versus in years prior. And you see that twenty one to twenty two, we went from forty one and then last year went to forty four. And then this year, we're at thirty eight. And we will continue to work on that trajectory to decline and continue to decrease chronic absenteeism. I stand for any questions on that.
Good job.
Yeah, that's great.
Awesome.
Thank you. And Crystal Gutierrez is not here, so I'm going to share the information. And this is consideration of updated school health handbook and changes and additions. So there is the removal of COVID guidelines as toolkit from PED no longer exists and will be treated as all other communicable infectious diseases. Fever was adjusted to match the evidence based practice. That one hundred point four is considered a true fever. A fever is a symptom and not an illness in itself. The body's average temperature can vary during the day between ninety seven point six and to ninety nine point five. Mild elevations under a hundred point four can be the result of exercise or excess clothing or a hot environment. And added, the added section on complimentary and alternative medicine. The non FDA approved products, this is information provided for clarification and guidance that follows the New Mexico Nurse Practice Act. And then also added section for parents to be aware, they have the ability to opt out of the vision and hearing screenings. Additions to the mental health section, how to access services for students, emergency procedures, and then the updated community providers list. There's also a link to the updated handbook. And Ms. Gutierrez wanted you to know that. And I will stand if you have any questions to take note, to give them to her.
I have no questions.
Just a quick question about the alternative medications. I think especially we have to allow that. Is that right, Mr. Sparks? Alternative medications. So there may need to be an adjustment.
And so I think that was an added section.
Oh, an added section, okay.
I can get clarification and President Osborne, and I will have Mrs.
Yeah, that's not a, I mean, it doesn't change our approval or not approval of this. It's just something for her to discuss with Mr. Sparks, I think. Right?
I will make note of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
That said, I make a motion to is consideration to approve the health service handbook.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mr. Martin and a second from all in favor.
I
Opposed, in theory, thank you.
And then I think that it was the BMI as well. Did anybody have any questions regarding that? I will take note.
No.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Osborne, members of the board, I come to you tonight with C zero one zero zero, considering the superintendent in your role in the evaluation. I want to look at the second page under the superintendent's contract. This is the part that we have adjusted to say the board will take action on an existing superintendent's contract prior to the contract expiring, instead of setting a firm deadline that it has to be in February. And that allows us that flexibility when there's a board election that would inhibit that. So I stand for any questions again on this one.
And I think that meets the law that they just changed it when you do that.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you for
You bet.
I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Cordova, a second from Mrs. Epps, all in favor.
I
Opposed, none, motion carries, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. We also have the employee services report. Brandon, can you go to the one with the colors? There you go. And so if you notice on the summary, the secondary five point two nine teachers, elementary five point oh teachers and sped twenty two, we still need to make progress on our sped hiring, but those other numbers are really fantastic.
They are fantastic. Thank you guys for the hard work you've been doing.
Keep it up. Thank you.
Questions or comments about employee services report? Hey, open positions report. All right then. Financial matters, Ms. Piento. And we will be going to item B.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Russ. Tonight, I bring a recommendation from the inventory committee to remove the CMS vehicle unit number two thirty seven, which is a twenty twenty Chevrolet Trax that was deemed a loss due to hail damage. And I stand for any questions.
Are there any questions?
No, ma'am.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mrs. Epps, all in favor.
I
Opposed, question carries.
The next item I bring is the final cash report. It is for all expenditures, our cash balances and our revenue for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. And I stand for any questions.
No, no questions. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
That open forum. No, ma'am, no speaker cards were submitted, nor were there any submissions online for public comment or speaker cards. Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Russ, announcements, please.
Thank you, Madam President. September second will be Labor Day holiday. Everyone is ready for that three day weekend. No school for students and our district offices will be closed. We'll be hosting parent teacher conferences on September thirteenth. And just as a reminder, we really strive for a hundred percent participation at this fall parent teacher conference. And our next regular Board of Education meeting will be here on September twenty fourth, usual time.
Very much. And okay, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cordova, second by Mr. Martin, all in favor.
I, I
Opposed, this meeting is adjourned.
Meeting